It's 9:12 on Monday, February 22nd, 2018. And I hope that the county officials will be able to order. Today we have Mike Martin, his afterwards back searching through our implications. So please stay with us. And then we'll be ready to present.
Thank you Judge. Do pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for, uh, thank you for your grace and for your mercy. Father, thank you for these that lead our community. I pray, Father, for their health. I pray, Father, for our wisdom, for discernment, for understanding. I pray for compassion, comfort, and peace. Father, lead and guide and be glorified in our lives is our prayer in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pray that the peace of America, we now the states of America, and to the Lord, which is strength, domination, and without individual liberty and justice. It's moving on Texas. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. Like we say, we're not watching the end of this thing.
First thing, those who hold this record, it is out of town today. Uh, first thing is approval of amendments. Recognize the amendments from January 8th, 2018, Flower County officials for. And also the January 11th, 2018, special permission for. Any changes, so recognize those. Number two budget amendments to consider and act upon the group of budget amendments for 2017, 2018. This review. Sherry?
My warning is that there are many no-go without standing. He is a good artist.
We approve the budget amendments for the 2017, 2018 budget.
Have the motion. And second all, favoring, four zero, thank you. Quarterly budget comparison to recognize the first quarter comparison before for F Act 17 and Y Act 18.
Right on schedule as with our last year and again, if you have any specific questions.
Do you have any questions? All right, so ready now. Number four, vouchers. To consider and act upon the approval of payment of vouchers process by the county office of office for January 3, 2018, January 17, 2018. Check numbers, 178539 for 178758. And wire transfers, 1018 through 1024. And then another wire, 1025. And vendors and total for a total of $2,972,400,000. Any questions?
Remove approval of the vouchers as we look.
Number two, second, I'll write your name. Four zero, thank you.
Judge, I would like to refer it to everyone's attention at last water. All of the, 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 that was on last, on 2012.
Okay. Okay. Uh, number five, insurance report to recognize insurance under four Ks. What do you think about?
He's got a question. No, there was, there was nothing unusual about the issue in the court. I'm just hearing an explanation at the next time.
Okay, so. So, so recognize number six, HELPS, to consider and act upon participation in the Healthcare Enhancement for Local Public Safety Retirees Act. Health Care Act.
Well, HELPS is Healthcare Enhancement for Local Public Safety Retirees Act. It was an act that was passed in 2006. We have been approached by a couple of different, um, current law enforcement employees that are anticipating retirement reasonably short order, that are interested in participating in this, um, act. What it does, it allows retired public safety officers to exclude from the gross income distribution from their retirement system, which is used towards paying health insurance premiums. And if you need health, it will, um, envision insurance for premiums up to $3,000 a year. TCD RS does, um, have the capability of allowing this distribution. And in order to take advantage of tax savings, those law enforcement officer retirees must, um, have their premiums deducted from their retirement. It can't, they can't.
It's automatic.
It has to automatically come out of the TCD RS. And again, TCD RS does have that capability. Currently, the only counties that are participating from TCD RS are Alice County, Denton County, Harris County, Parker County, and Heron County. But since we were approached, we wanted to bring this to the officials for to see what your thoughts are. I had probably had about it and I haven't been caring about it. Currently, we have 75 retirees that participate in some form of healthcare through our retirement. Of those 75, 32 would qualify under the HELPS Act. So we have 32 people that could potentially benefit from this. I believe the optional. It wouldn't be without labor. Um, if, if this court so desires to have rest to begin participation, my office would then verify to contact all of these retirees. They spoke to retirees to question whether or not extend the option for them to participate. Then once we do that, there would be forms to complete, communicate with TCD RS, um, and get them set up. Then once everybody is set up, then the labor becomes minimal because then it's just a matter of reporting any changes and keeping a spreadsheet going back and forth. All right, everyone.
So what are your thoughts? And, uh, this is something to, with the HELP.
It, it wouldn't give them more insurance or any kind of supplement. What it would do is allow them to have their premiums deducted, or payroll deducted, if you will, from their retirement. And it would allow them, um, to take a tax savings of up to $3,000 worth of those premiums on those taxes. But that would be between them and the IRS directly. We wouldn't be doing any of the tax savings. Uh, what all we would be doing would be notify TCD RS to make the deductions. Right.
It does make you wonder though, that of 254 counties, only six counties are doing this. Why?
Potentially it may be the, the labor involved upfront, maybe as we were not aware of the HELPS program. They may not be aware, they may not have enough participation for law enforcement to warrant it. They may not have interest from their law enforcement community.
Does that also include fire departments?
Yes, it would include, um, it includes police officers, deputies, jailers, investigators, probation officers, attorneys, judges, bailiffs, firefighters, and potential prisoners.
Show any interest in that.
We've had, uh, we were approached by two law enforcement employees. We had not done a survey or querying these roles.
There were seven of them right there with little, like bubble pants right there.
I think nobody knew really about participating in it. So once we know about it, it's, it's a good thing for call. You see any?
Really, the, the only drawback that I can see is the, um, labor involved in upfront in the initiation of that. That all three.
So you're also the, the only.
Yes. Um, the only thing that I can foresee is requests from other non-law enforcement, um, employees to payroll, or not payroll deducted, but retirement, the premiums, and they can't do that. It's only law enforcement.
Remove that, Father County. Allow Father County to participate in the healthcare enhancement for local public safety retirees.
Okay, have a motion. And second all, favoring, four zero. There you go, guys, you're welcome. Thank you, thank you very much. Number seven, treasures report to recognize monthly does not before. Also the cash report.
Good morning. Um, our cash this morning at Emerald National Bank checking account is 19 million. I'll just write these off and give you the title at the very end. Um, we're earning 1.57 this morning. Texas Class, we have 5.6 million, earning 1.57. Tax Pool, we have 403,000, earning 1.3. Tax Pool Prime, over 9 million, and we're earning 1.51. So our total general fund this morning is 35 million, 3,052 dollars and 78 cents. And then if you will, um, get the investment report, you'll open that to page three. Just want to bring out that, um, at the very bottom of the page, if you will, let them see even, um, you know, our general fund has a special rate, and that's on the right side. And then on the left, just wanted to point out how well even the other accounts, our rates are doing very well. And, um, something worth noting. Then if you turn to page eight, this just gives you a summary. This is Tax Pool and Tax Pool Prime showing you from this time a year ago, the rate was point, uh, 2.5, 0.25, and this morning it's 1.51. So that's in a year's time. So our, the market has really, we've been very blessed and the increase is still happening. Uh, and then on page 19, there's Texas Class, and it also gives you the chart from a year ago. So money's coming in. Sherry's gonna talk to you, I think, on where we are percentage wise on tax dollars. Kind of give you up to date on that.
Right now, we're at 57.18 percent. Um, I anticipate probably 30, 35 percent that'll be in the next eight days. Um, our top 20 taxpayers, we only have collected 25 percent of them, and majority of them do pay the end of January.
The hard money in.
Okay. Thank you. Continue on.
The government can open that up.
And that is about a little under 5 percent higher than last year. I anticipate that was probably because of the IRS changes to try and get the property tax paid for the first year.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate that. Okay, um, elections to consider and act upon. There's three things here. First one, we just said, Lynn had done that emergency surgery, uh, last week, she's doing fine. Uh, Christie is here today, but I promised I wouldn't have her call. Unless we have to. So all we're doing is just the usual thing. Uh, A is order of appointing election judges establishing grounds for early voting and establishing the maximum number of courts. B is order of appointing officers for central counseling station. And C is order of appointing judges for early voting, ballot board, signature verification committee. I talked to her on Friday or Thursday, there have been no changes. This is all at the same places, same sort of business. And also, just let me point this out too. Lynn's office was given an, um, award, so to speak, an honorable mention for going above and beyond in the, on the website, making more accessible to people. And they scored within the 90, 90, 90 percent range. So, uh, that's all to them. Good job with that. There you go, Christie. Did you know that?
No.
Okay, well now you did. I'll let you have this.
Thank you, Christie, because she's big about.
Yeah, stand up, right by your seat, Christie, she works there, okay. Is anybody have any questions at all for?
Remove, we approve the order of appointing election judges establishing the IRS during voting and establishing the maximum number of courts.
Motion, and second all, favoring, four zero.
Remove, we approve the order of appointing officers for central counseling station. Second. Did you want to go?
We can do all of them. I know we already done, we've already done. Just keep going. Okay, have a motion, and second all, favoring.
Remove, we approve the, uh, appointing the judges for early voting ballot board and signature verification committee. Sorry.
Have a motion, and second all, favoring. Four zero, thank you. All right, number nine, Texas heroes and heroines, Lone Star Valley. Consider and act upon confirmation designated by Florida, 2018, Lone Star Legends, Heroes, Boys, Kings. King Gil is here today. King, would you like to come up and talk about theirs and anybody else that you have with you?
Good morning, thank you. It is both an honor to be here to address you folks. I want to recognize Lone Star Valley Board President Jenny Alzira, our board members, past president and board member Marie Lacer, and board member Jared Price, who graciously joined us this morning. Uh, my colleague, Vicki McLean, sorry she can't be here this morning, she broke her leg in rehearsal yesterday. I just talked to her on the phone, she's, she's, she's gonna be well, through the exposed production. You can't keep a tripper down. She just took the admonition, break the leg a little prematurely already. But she is in great spirits, made up of four surgeries as well. Uh, want to thank you for this opportunity. This show is unique. It celebrates five iconic Texas women, Cynthia Harper, Monty Goodnight, the mothers of Texas Panhandle, uh, Patricia McCormick, notorious slum dancer, oldest looking resident of Old Tascosa, Susanna Dickinson, one of the sole survivors of the Alamo, her husband. And then rounding it out is Emily West Morgan, who's credited with being inspiration behind the famous Texas song, Young Rose of Texas. We hope to take this production will be the ninth and 10th of February at the Boeckman Performing Arts Center. And then we have hopes of taking it to all 26 counties from Texas Panhandle at some point to schools and city groups. So because of the historic and educational nature, and the promises shown holds for our schoolchildren and our citizens, I want to thank you very much for this wonderful recognition. Thank you, Ron.
I don't know if you realize, but we have a good second boy here that played it in Rockaway.
I heard that.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you again.
With your own praise and love, get out.
Well, we thank you and we're honored by this, this celebratory proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to wait, make this with you?
That would be wonderful, you know, why? Okay. I like that, uh, we proclaim February 9th, 2018, as Lone Star Legends and Love Stories Day.
Right, have a motion and order, all in favor, basically, 10, 4 to 0. One of the last to be at King, uh, Commissioner McGee, you have a town, you know what to do, back to something, can you give that to me?
Yes, ma'am. That would be wonderful. Thank you again, appreciate you both.
Thank you very much. All right, number 10, National School Choice Free, to consider and act upon confirmation designated January 21st, 2017, Flower County School Choice Free. There's another vote for confirmation. Is anybody here who can all get to that? One. Oh, yeah. Father County School Choice, I guess this is crazy, where is school? I hope so. Same way, I read it.
I make motion that, uh, we, upon confirmation designated January 27th, 2018, as County School Choice Free. Say again.
Okay, number 11, City Generalities Tier 1, to consider and comment upon the Dubs Development 621 South Polk, Pratt Property ID number R 0065-100110. Tier 1, board voted 9-0 to approve of a 90 percent tax rebate with annual cap of $25,000 over a Tier 1 period to assist with the increased unexpected construction costs associated with the project together with the enhanced benefits that may result in public and downtown spaces.
Morning, my name is Andrew. Good morning. My name is Andrew Freeman, I'm a development manager at the City of Amarillo. Um, did everyone get a copy of the packet I handed out last week? This morning? No, I brought copies.
I think. No, we did not. We both watched for that on Friday, didn't we?
It basically has the, has the cover letter from Chair Bentley and the term sheets and all the backup documents as far as the project's concerned. As you stated, the project's, um, project names, Dubz Developments located 621 South Polk, corner Southeast 7th Street. And the purpose of this development agreement is to assist and facilitate development of new two-suite restaurant facility, um, which meets the goals of the Downtown Strategic Action Plan and the Tier's final project plan, um, which is to create new retail uses within the Tier's boundary. Um, this building will be used as a restaurant, with two tenants that are committed to the project on, on each side of the building. It's currently under construction, will be finished in the next couple of months. And it consists of about 20,000 square feet in the building, not including 6,100 square feet on the door side of the building, which is going to be used as a beer garden, kind of a pocket garden, you could say. Which is going to have a stage. They're also committing to do underground infrastructure as far as electric boxes to make it play and play for any concerts or street parties that the, um, the developers have there. Um, the developer is Dubz Development LLC, owns the building. As was stated in the caption, it's a 90 percent tax reimbursement for 10 years with an annual cap of 20,000 per year. Base value is a little under 1.4 million based on 2018 tax values. The private investment on the project is almost five and a half million, and the applicants anticipate completion afterwards of a value of $4 million in tax returns. The project consists of side work, new construction of the building, design engineering, construction, like sidewalk, sliding, dance game, utilities. And just a little backup to the reasoning behind the approval. The board, um, of course felt that it met the goals of the tiers, but also after discussing with the applicant at the meeting on January 11th, it's, um, they let the board know that there was an initial one and a half to two month increase in the construction timeline due to finding the basement filled with debris from when the old building, opera house, I believe, burned down, which was over 1,000 yards of additional excavation and additional work that they did not anticipate when the project was really originally designed. So that was also a determining factor. In addition to the little spot on the door side, 6,100 square feet for the, for the park, a beer garden, which is an additional entertainment venue, something to get people down the pole street.
So, uh, the, uh, wasn't the wreath, was that covered or is?
It was buried. It was buried when the, when it burned down. Instead of taking it off the site, clearing it, they just dug a hole, or put it in the basement and covered it up. So they, that was a nice surprise for them when they were doing construction jobs.
So did you have any engineers, any project engineers looking to take that at that time?
Um, the applicants here, I'm not sure if they may have pulled a core sample that far down to discover that that was there, but.
I suppose it was decided that you can hop up.
Uh, I'm Sean Puegway, I work for Dubz Development. Um, we did do geotechnical investigations, we did detect a slab nine feet down. So we didn't find some concrete, we did not know we could find 1,000 yards of brick, uh, charred lumber, and other organic material that had to come out. Uh, we knew there'd be some buildings, we anticipated that, but we did not anticipate digging a roughly 10,000 square foot hole, 16 feet in the ground, for us to get that, put that back and build it back the way it was.
I guess I was thinking that, uh, was it approved as a tiered property? Certainly, uh, I think that is certainly one enhancement, uh, that would be a long way toward including the, uh, state view of downtown, or the track, and, and a lot. I was just concerned about that, uh, that additional finding that, I guess, is that, that's not setting a precedence as, uh, we, uh, for other projects, uh, in the, that, that, so I said, you can do it, just, but just, uh, say where you're able to locate them behind that project.
On the site, uh, we did four test holes. We did not turn, we did not catch the debris, but when we found it, we knew we had to get it all out or else we'd risk settling unstable foundations.
What was the, what was extra cost?
Um, well over $200,000. It was a lot of time, a lot of diesel, a lot of operators, a lot of digging.
I guess one, one, one final observation there was, uh, leading to the, uh, the agenda item. Uh, I'll pick it up at the last part of the sentence, says together, uh, well, assist with the increased unexpected construction costs associated with the project together with the enhanced benefits that may, that may result for the public and downtown spaces.
We've gone ahead and we're putting infrastructure into the sidewalk, connecting utilities, so that we have everything in place for a poultry block party. Um, if you remember, anytime we do a poultry block party, it takes a whole night of electricians to go ahead and stretch all of that, all the cable, all of the infrastructure. We're putting all of that, it's going to be set in a box, lift the cover, plug it in, throw it over here, and we're ready to go. All of that's already underway.
I was calling the word names, I'm saying, he will.
Can comments, if you have, pass along to say counsel or not?
Uh, we have to, counsel, I think, that, that's certainly in our office and, and, uh, full session, so just, uh, maybe, uh, some of the, if you're free here, if I can be able to, uh, some of the, uh, contract more in, in their, uh, in question.
I'll just say I was not able to make that meeting, unfortunately. Maybe the first or second meeting I missed all. I haven't been on that board, but, uh, this project was very worthwhile to me, and it's one that really enhances our downtown. That was our goal, so.
I would certainly hate to be the, the one obstacle that would say no. So, I'm, I'm for it, listen. Do we need to vote on this later, or do you want to wait till I can go on to move?
Uh, thanks, just here for, I'm just here for comments. I'm a counsel also, but, but, that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, number 12, Santa Fe Autoren, considering act upon the binding of current policies, you already held the grant on deal. Lynn and I have had a few conversations on this, that's, that's experiences. Had some different experiences, nothing that's really turned out super bad, but the potential is there. And so I really want to come back for the, ask you guys to reconsider renting the San Fe Auditorium. Um, we do have three contracts for this events throughout this next year, so I ask that we exclude those three dates, but, um, really want you to reconsider us renting the auditorium. We can still use it for tag, for Potter County, you know, different issues like that, but when it comes to actually renting, you just are taking on a tremendous, um, risk of terrible things happening. But the time that is devoted to it, that your Potter County employees are having to, to, um, to use to make this auditorium available and, and take care of it and keeping it safe, is really a huge risk. And so I'd like to ask you guys to reconsider and let's no longer rent the auditorium.
Have we had some bad experiences now?
We've had very close, that could, could have been bad, um, the main thing is how much time that it's taking. Uh, we did have an employee that's now on workers' comp from, um, you know, trying to clean up issues. I've had this last, um, event that took place, we all had to get together, the guard, the deputies had not been paid, total time due, uh, but then there were some issues on our part that the people weren't happy with, so we kind of had to compromise and come to an understanding, which, which came out okay. But it's just, um, very, very time-consuming and a huge risk, and I just would ask that you reconsider.
I guess what I'm trying, you say it's a huge risk, can you give us anything?
Exactly, um, well, you don't know, um, who's actually renting it, I mean, of course, we, we have names, but you don't know what the party will be, how, um, intoxicated it might be. You have equipment coming in on our new elevators that we just spent all that money remodeling, so we're very anxious about what they carry into the building to decorate the auditorium with, whether it's weddings or, you know, special events, parties. So there's that risk you run, and then, um, whether there's, uh, toilet issues, water running, left things running. I think that the event before this actually caused, um, the drains to clog, and so they had to, um, work on getting the, keep in the kitchen.
People have no respect for the, coming into the building while they're up there, they have no respect, uh, they just think it's a ball place to party. Uh, we cannot even provide the electrical that they require, they want to bring in full live bands up there and stuff like that. That area was set up for public speaking, as to the extent we give when we redevelop.
What are the three events that you have scheduled right now?
I have a wedding reception for April twenty-eighth, and June ninth is a class reunion, and September twenty-first is first Presbyterian church.
Anywhere we can get out of them, at least two of them. At class reunion, they've downloaded.
But then it's important, it's important, this unit's class reunion, and they put a contract in.
Well, you know, it sounds like this is a huge hassle for the county and the, and the issues that might develop from that, but, you know, of course, so, I would be inclined to accept, so, you're right, you have not many.
Now we make that, I'll second that.
Have a motion, and a second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Uh, question, 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 uh, uh, are we, are we doing, uh, are we vetting above, uh, I think we're applying to, to.
There's no vetting to do, they have a contract that they agreed, you know, agreed to, and signed on, and they get this text.
Basically.
They know. Yeah, they know, right? And it's just, you know, a large group of people, it's not that they're actually trying to go against the contractor, don't care, it's just a risk that you run when you have events like this. You don't know what other people's going to do, or, um, and the deputies, um, the effort that they're having to put into, it's just, it's just a huge risk that I, I hate to see as.
And no, and that seems true for, uh, the, the in-laws, that we let them get in, I think it's fine, but I also let the, it's the second year ago, in this March, could play Saturday, they drove the vehicle across the lawn. And so I have already told them, and told them, yeah, if you drove the vehicle across the, it's sensitive, I don't think it's be okay.
It's, it's the unforeseen.
Yeah, they don't care for their court.
I mean, you can give all the rules and, and regulations and try to oversee it, but it's just a risk that I think that it's just, it's a beautiful auditorium.
Wait, let me ask this final question. So are we, uh, uh, discontinuing all uses of that, leases of that facility, or just those that are having like parties, reunions, and like?
I still use the like tag, that comes to remind. The original part of it, yeah, but it's still being, I'm sure we use the law. Or related issues and stuff like that. Okay, so I have a motion, and a second, all in favor. Three, this raises right hand. Thank you, so, thank you, thank you. With exception of those three days, right, yes.
You got that, too. You also, but we've also been asked for another, another organization that wants to compel the building and, or the courthouse.
Number sixteen, Hutter County Constable Precinct one to review the tier one partial assumption of racial protection.
Just your warehouse cleaning. So last year it's gonna be this simple, all on local agencies now have to file a full report every year.
What do you think of that?
Well, if you had any car camera, you can file partial, because you keep the video, but now everybody has to file a full detailed report because legislature just checked it. It was simple, now it's gonna be, take a little more time, but it's just your warehouse cleaning for me.
Is this to recognize all the evidence?
No, it's just to recognize that law says we have to present to commissioners every year, everyone will file.
Alright. And number seventeen, equipment purchase to consider and act upon purchase of two late tasers from Exxon Enterprises Inc. For total dollar amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which can be used by Constable Precinct one. They're all works in common with Precinct one, I don't know if that's an issue or approve the budget, just be prepared to submit funds for the purchase. Okay, so more tasers.
Basically yours doesn't work?
Yeah.
Mine works sometimes, they're both probably twelve years old, because these are the first generation tasers that were ever brought out. And taser came on in like ninety, late nineties, two thousands.
So the new tasers are all?
No, they're just, there's newer generation, probably a couple generations since these came out.
Do you have to qualify?
We already are.
We've been trained, even with the new ones, you have to be?
Yeah, they operate the same, they're just, I guess, you know, how everything gets a pretty different.
We got the experience of new tasers.
Certainly with brother constables, we're all off of these utilized tasers rather than?
Yeah, it's in the courtroom, reason why in the courtroom, the taser is probably the optimal weapon to use. You pepper spray in the courtroom, you're gonna have a big mess, and you know, you start fighting over, going people with chairs and pages.
Does that happen a lot?
We, yeah, I haven't been in a fight yet, but we get, you know, especially my court attorneys, we get some kids that just have no respect. And some parents the same way, and I've had the, you know, I've had them in several threats to, you know, you're going out the door here in a minute. And the other two constables didn't either, because they have the newer style tasers.
Sheriff, do you have this taser they're talking about?
It's just a?
We probably have the newer one just.
Any actions in your?
The court has brokers. Yeah, you know, court has security funds can't be used for, that's our responsibility.
Yeah, she has the two thousand dollar. Other than signing, what do we use?
We have a maintenance agreement on our x-ray machine, I think that that, that on that too.
This is also Dick Weathers, he's, he's, he's the reservist.
Duval.
I heard he went to work full time.
Yeah, he did. It's the same with my reserves, I lost both of my reserves, they're now chiefs of police, so.
How much money do you spend on?
A lot of my budget, I probably say.
We've all built up one of those.
All of my budget, all I've spent was a uniform shirt and pants.
And they all went to work somewhere else?
Yeah, I got, I did get some use out of, out of them before, but you know, my one retired guy, he's now the chief of Highland Park. And then the other girl I was using, she was an officer at Emerald College, now she's the chief of police at Emerald College. And, you know, I told her, I said, you know, I just advise them, you can still stay in reserve if you want, but if you're being the chief, you need to, you know.
Do they turn any equipment?
Yes, I have all the equipment. Matter of fact, my other reserve now that I'm trying to bring on, I think is gonna be able to use uniforms instead of.
Well, now that we're setting in, as far as the tasers, are we fully comfortable that we cannot be comfortable with the entire, with the, some of the system that we carry if we don't have?
Equipment, exactly.
Yes. Yeah, the taser's a tool, but it's. It's better than blowing our ass.
I made a question that the people purchasing the two tasers from Exxon Enterprises Inc. For a total dollar amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, used by Constable Precinct one and Constable Precinct four. And due to budget adjustment and court has security fund, the tasers cannot keep out, if you want me to see it.
Sorry.
Motion in second, all in favor of issuing. Four to zero. Okay, sorry, eighteen, Sheriff's barn at six and Newby, consider an act upon the four constables utilizing Sheriff's barn six and Newby. Once the sheriff has moved, this is for all four of y'all.
Yes, ma'am. First, like Paula does, for the absence of our two co-constables, we had Constable Stroud, she's went on the training, as well as Duval, he had an emergency with his wife. So we're here representing all the constables, and we have a proposal here that we wanna read, and I have the laws that govern the, I do these that require us to be able to conduct that, so what we have here is, we're the Hutter County Constable, we got Precinct one, two, three, and four. We're here today to petition the court for approval to utilize the Hutter County Sheriff's barn located at six and Buoy, once the sheriff has moved. This request is essential to us all based on the need for all constables to be compliant with the laws that it relates to our duties. As of now, we're out of compliance as it relates to the following. Rit of sequestration is the process by which property is removed from the process, process, processor. Pending the outcome of a dispute in which two or more parties contend for it. Per the laws which we just handed out to you, Texas Civil Practice and Remedy Code sixty-two point zero zero, sixty-two point zero six three states. The constable is required to take possession of the property and found in his or her county, and check her and for and manage to sequester property in a prudent manner, related, retain it in his or her custody until the court order it sold or released. Our duties are to secure the property and protect the value for the court, ensure we're liable as well as the county. Rit of execution is a judicial enforcement of a post-money judgment usually requiring the seizure and selling of the judgmented as property. Texas Civil Practice Remedy Code, Subchapter D, Section thirty-four point zero six one, Duties and Liability of Executing Officers. The officer shall keep securely all personal property on which he assumes leverage and for which no delivery bond is given. If an injury or loss to an interested property, a party result from the inflictance of the officer. The officer and his sur, uh, surrogates are liable for the value of the property lost or damaged. This process also requires the constable to take possession and safely store until the total duty is paid or the property is sold. In conclusion, your approval to all to allow the constables of Hutter County to utilize this building once the sheriff has moved, would not burden the county with any additional costs, the move would actually bring more revenue to the county. According to Texas Civil Practice Remedy Code, Section sixty-two point zero six two, Compensation of Officers. An officer who retained custody of sequestered property is entitled to just compensation and reasonable charges to be determined by a court that issued through writ. The officer's compensation and charges shall be taxed and collected at a cost of speed. This fee will be payable at time of property retrieval. Your consideration in this matter is respected and greatly appreciated, and we're looking forward to continued growth of our constis, office. And I got an example of where we're out of compliance. We're currently, and I have a copy of all our yearly revenue, I mean, we're constantly going up on revenue, and it's really a big difference in Constable Stroud's revenue. She gets a lot of the sequestered requests from Aaron, Aaron's request that she go and collect this property. Where we're at fault is that the person requesting this property cannot, we're required to take possession of this property. And what we're doing now is allowing the rental place to take it and store. Which, you know, we hadn't had any issues with it, but we're trying to avoid that issue, so we're needing the area, and we figure once the that building came available, that we'll be able to store the property.
So, so the issue is that if, that's the question, as far as, is the, the property of, I mean, the vendor and the in, in the individual that purchased that on the time or whatever, and then the fault that Aaron now, the property owners, or the owners that actually sold merchandise to the individuals, how is it still?
Yeah, and, and when they're told they're not allowed to sell the property, but ultimately, we are responsible, and all states, and we're supposed to take the property into our.
We're in charge of the carrying and custody.
And store it until it is sold.
Aaron takes that property, and they put it in their warehouse, and they said, oh, well, we haven't received it at this position, let's get it to sell it anyways. And then, only takes one person, and if you put the right lawyer, legal aid, or who, trust me, there's lawyers in the state. I don't know, I guess they sit around and read the laws, look at, hey, we can go after somebody for this. One person comes and say, hey, they sold my property, they're responsible, not Aaron's, we are, it says in the law, we're. And we're starting to seize more property, I mean, not seize in the bar, she was in the process of seizing the house, we can't store that.
Right now, you both, all the constables are acting in the business.
We don't, we don't have a budget for that.
They're gonna build it, and that's going to be a lot of security, but it'd be twenty-four seven.
It's got cams, the sheriffs, you know, right down the store, sheriff's cars there, so, I mean, it's, I think it's, there's a lot more, I would say, traffic in and out of there that.
Mike, you have any other buildings that might be considered?
And I talked to Mike about the pool coming in here, and he, he made a suggestion.
Yeah, there's some options here, like I said, this is the first I've heard of this issue, I wish they would come to visit with me about it.
What brings our depression, we need to bring it to the, to the municipal school.
We do have the area that I like to path from the west side of the building, of that actual, that square footage right there is around four thousand square feet. It has overhead door, it's heated, cold offices, one portion of the building. Uh, I definitely need to take over the east half for the sheriff currently, it's a three quarters of the building out there, because that was originally planned through the committee. We could take it over, we left some vehicles there, compressors, stuff out there, my department uses our own thing, the equipment, so. Right now, the space that they're speaking of is around eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-three square feet. So we would be better suited to use that. The area that they're speaking of, on the west side, are you gonna store any drugs or anything like that out there?
That was the other thing, right now my evidence locker's in my office, well, everybody has to keep my office. I've got locks on the filing cabinet, but it's still, you know, it's not that secure. Duval's evidence locker's in his office, or EBS, and who knows, has access to that out there. And we were looking at taking part of the room and making, you know, part of it as a, a secure evidence place, where when we have the key, but you know, every time I open my filing cabinet with the locks, it's my evidence locker, I got marijuana stored in there, it's, it's miles up office room, and stuff. And that was another, trying to get us a place to store the property, and a place to put our evidence that's secure, that we have. You know, right now, if we get somebody and we arrest them, they're on a bike, and, you know, sheriff's offices, you know, they, I understand, they you can't carry backpacks in here anymore, because they don't have the room to store it, so if we arrest somebody that has a backpack, we gotta have a place to store it.
Okay, so Mike, you're often in eleven thousand square feet of stores, is that right?
That's the, that's the current sheriff, the sheriff currently uses eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-three, I have around four thousand, I carry.
When the sheriff leaves?
We would be looking to take over the eleven thousand, the area produced their request and everything, and then if they needed a I don't know if they need a heater, cooled office, or whatever, we do have one there, we have the other facility out there, but it's only, it's the west of four thousand square feet that I mentioned to you earlier today.
Close proximity to the?
It's, it's right, it's right here at the movie property, these are nineteen, all of them's nineteen thirty-two structures. The building that I'm in, the sheriff was currently in, when they're going in, it's fireproof building, you have trans eye roofs, ice cream, it's not gonna burn.
So all of those properties that are in question right now, blue site, okay?
Yeah, I mean.
I went out there this morning, but.
The sheriff's office has their big building, which is the whole east half, and then there's another, down on the end, there's another overhead door on the west, very west end, that's where. It's radish proof.
We have some place, we have space out there. And Mike, Mike needs to extract the stores out there, because the center bay and basement is full.
So, so can you share, is that what we talked about?
I would take over, see this camera out here, I'd take over what the sheriff has.
I mean, it's fully sharing, and it'd be adequate for both parties, you talked about it, taking the eleven thousand square foot, and what remains is on that.
Four, four thousand would be for them all over here. They would take over what I have, there's a wall between, yeah, there's a separation.
Do I have any cars that you've?
Yes, as you said.
Right now, we use the, well.
Not currently, I, we don't begin to.
I just, I just raised my last one, right now, I use T biller to put them in. You know, they're bonded and insured, so, but you know, we're also looking, we have to seize this property, it's not gonna, you know.
So Mike, this property?
We're gonna charge these people that are.
Part of it, aren't part of it, it's, yeah, we can have it right there all the way.
What if, let me get you guys to talk with Mike, go off and take a look.
Let's go look at it.
Take a look at it, and bring this back to court then, if we take a look at it, I think this, I think we can work this out.
Mike, are there any other options on the other buildings in the county that might be of use?
Depending on what you're gonna store in the building, if you're gonna put vehicles in the building, you're gonna be in the building, you know, vehicles, I presume, could be parked outside.
Yeah, I think we probably, I think that other end looks smaller and.
The only thing that I would ask is the loft area, it's got a loft, we, we use that two-story furniture up top, and stuff in my project. But we will need to get into your area, but if you've got a way to sec, to secure the evidence in there, we need to know if that's, I don't mind employees around where you've got evidence.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking for, is an open area to store the furniture, possible, see some furniture up right now. Everybody's wanted her, because she's really good at it, but then we're looking for a little separate room, which I'm assuming that, you know, has a little second room that we can secure for evidence. To backpacks and robes and stuff like that, and I just move my, you know, all fours, we utilize that as an evidence storage, it's a little more secure than four floors empty building, I mean, it's secure, but, you know, students have access to my office, facilities, I see everybody is you know, I don't wanna get myself in a bind of the evidence storage, if something comes up missing, it's.
Did I mention that you would charge sports?
Oh, yeah, so one of the papers that I sent out highlighted it where it allows the constable to store, uh, to charge storage.
Well, having once we got this up and going, and we can come to you, well, actually, the court, the court issues it, the court issues it, sets what the sports people.
So there's this grabbing in court for that. That was mine, don't move this up, come back.
So, how long you guys, on average, how long at the, at the evidence storing, basically?
Well, evidence is stored indefinitely till there's a disposition of the case, and we can destroy it. Now, I got some that's probably been disposed, that I could probably destroy now. As far as the furniture from Aaron's, we don't know how long that came, it's whenever there's a disposition on the case from the court, we don't know. Once we grab it, we pretty much don't know anything about it until, you know, it, we don't know what else to do. I guess Aaron's got a big warehouse full of stuff we've seized.
Okay, we'll bring that back in a couple of weeks. Um, number nineteen, fire station, fire rescue station two remodeling, informal bid, number one one five six, eight. Eight, consider an act upon approval of bid from National Guard, P B F, T L C, V P A, for one thousand five hundred and fifty-five, and D B T, five thousand and nine hundred and fifty-five, purchase in two minutes.
Good morning. We put the proposal out of bid, and TLC handyman came up with a little bid of eleven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. He did some discussing on it, purchasing, has talked to Ernesto with them, and we're gonna take, we're gonna probably purchase some of the materials for the construction. And then we'll take it off of that bid, as we do that. So some of that bid will be spent in buying materials. Eleven thousand five hundred and fifty, that's a sort of bid. Yes, sir.
And how much did we, our budget spend?
The initial budget on this was ten thousand for this particular part of the job, but also on the budget, we had eight thousand in for the HVAC. HVAC, you can't get in sixty-five hundred, you know, for it, so. It balanced that one out. That's all part of that. Anthony Allen's, Tri-State to do the plumbing, and Ash Tri-State to do the HVAC, and more electric to do the electrical work on it. All people that we've dealt with, we have county contracts with them, dealt with them before.
Is that the same time for us?
Yes.
I want the mayor going into the building.
I'm thinking, I'll let you the time for us to have the same, but he said he's used to set the, to do some of the projects.
Move that we approve of the bid for Ernesto, the owner, TLC, Handyman, for eleven thousand five hundred and to authorize power for him to purchase materials.
Motion in second, all in favor of issuing, and four to zero, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Number twenty, employment items, consider an act upon the call of the government item, store the nearest reservation, my head boss gives. Evidence taken, taken during the fourth, in the tenth, and elections to stay, maintain the status by part-time, full-time, and the decade, that he's later, as a part-time, that he's part-time. February five, March nine, that he, that he will date from the eighteen.
So who?
Have a motion, second, all in favor of issuing, four to zero. Hutter County projects, Mike, you have any to talk about?
No, ma'am.
Jolly four, we have five hundred and seventy-one individuals in our schedule. Nine of those females, one of them in minors, percentage of health is eighty-five percent, percentage of one female is ten percent.
Yes, we do, we had two for the sheriff's office, they were both, that different evidence, one, uh, here, and it was totaled, and the second kid was. Now, this can be really.
Both of them kids.
Yes, and so we're replacing the other one, insurance, we're working on that, and I think they already offered to replace, so, um, we've got both those. They were both, insurance, as far as time. Can I just ask, Sheriff, what happened?
A deer, a deer took one of them out and pulled it, and the other one was when the blew, the wind blew the other morning, blew a tree down on the park.
Was it a female deer or a curious?
There's a, there's a, well.
You got a suggestion, don't park close to trees.
I agree.
All right, but they're not, are they our vehicles, were they our vehicles?
Yes, undercover.
They're ones.
Not anymore.
They're undercover all right. They're under covers, because they're dead.
Very well marked.
So your first one, have you anything to add, agenda obvious for next time?
I think, to put it back on the phone, I thought we should have that, on terms of this, with the questions, especially policy, and but I mean, we do have to do that for all the zoo talking, so I'll be talking about that.
Well, I started, or I started, I've heard, I mean, the, the notice is that, uh, it's gonna be five hundred dollars for somebody to get that, that thing installed. To show how many people, I make a assumption you said, but I just don't see a reason to spend money on that.
I mean, we have.
We have a hundred and fifty spaces, we have, we have about a hundred and ten.
So, you know, and we may be considering, you know, there's a lot of people that park down there, is there any way that we might start renting those things?
The agreement with the city limits the use, people have an official business with the county.
Now, these are our parking lots, we own them.
It's not actually a lease, it's an access agreement, which is a license agreement, and it doesn't, it's, it's specifically for people who have official business with the county. Now, we could we could make those spaces available to people like law firms, attorneys, their attorneys, their lawyers. We, if they make those spaces available to people like that, um, as, as official business.
Is that there's a lot of need, a lot of need for that in the near future.
So I think that's where, kind of where we live, is that that these people that gave their permits back are going to be wishing they kept them. Because when you start, and, and, everything else starts, that's gonna be a huge problem.
So we, we might consider acquiring outside people, so to speak, who have official business with the county, from time to time, having, taking supplies as far as the units, as the unit uses.
Could we, I don't have a feel, but it just be, to move, uh, walk on, I don't know.
The, uh price has been, I think we could, if we, as long as it's official business, can, but even if we did, but at least that protects the pressure on the surface.
What I, what I might ask is if there's any way that we could adjust, get an adjustment on that policy from the, from the city, where we wouldn't be allowed to rent parking places.
We, we could ask for that.
I would certainly suggest that we do that, and, you know, maybe set aside vacant spaces for those people that like to rent, there's a lot of people downtown.
Or the bank.
Yeah, there's a lot of people.
Would you, where?
Interesting. I think that's, that's one way to go, or at least we could take some money.